Welcome to the ISD 709 Special School Board Meeting on this Thursday, May 12. We are having a committee of the whole board meeting concerning our budget. So again, we welcome our community that is going to listen to this on our YouTube channel. And I'm going to turn to Clerk Oswald for a roll call.
Member Eater is excused and Member Kirby is excused. A member of Ockler Kemp.
Yep.
Chair Lowfald.
Here.
Member Ockler, that's me, here I am. Member Sodell is excused, Member Sandholm.
Here.
Superintendent Vegas?
Present remotely.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds?
Present.
Deputy Clerk Erickson?
Here.
HR Director Seppes?
Here.
And Ockler, everybody else is excused and we have a point.
Thank you, Member Oswald, and I'm thinking that Member Kirby will come in as soon as he's able. And I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight and for CFO Erickson for giving us these dates. We have a couple more coming up to go over budgets. It's the first time we've gathered about budget, but it's a significant one where this is our only agenda item. And I just want to share with the board and our community too that Superintendent Vegas is here and he's participating remotely from his home because he is in quarantine because of COVID. So here we are, we're glad that we're here. And I'm going to the, we have one item on our agenda. It's Agenda Item Number Three Fiscal Year 22/23 Update. And I'm going to turn it over to CFO Erickson.
Thank you so much and thank you, members, for being here. Thank you for being able to present a overview at the last school board meeting. That same document is here again, you have a copy of that. And that'll be sort of our basis for general conversation for tonight. But you also have several handouts which we will get posted on Board Book for those that will be watching this after it is recorded and posted. So we'll make sure that all of these documents get shared as well. So we'll make sure that people can see those. The goal for tonight's meeting was to, again, to review our general processes related to the general fund budget and to go into a little bit more deeper conversations about that. But then we also wanted to spend some time to update you on ESAR. We know that there was some questions and we wanted to give an update on where we are in terms of the ESAR budget and ESAR funding and where we are and how we will be moving forward for the fiscal '23 school year and the timelines that are associated with that. We'll spend a little bit of time talking about some enrollment in a little bit more detail. A document should look familiar to you that we've used in the past couple of years with some estimates on there. And then also just wanting to spend a little bit of time. I had pulled some comparables from fiscal year '21 with a few other districts that are similar in size to us, just to kind of give everybody a sense of what these look like and kind of what a district similar to us might look like and how they're spending in certain program and object areas versus what Duluth Public Schools did. And then to give a little context about some of the similarities or why there may be some uniquenesses from district to district based on the different categories. So that's kind of where we'll start. But I did want to just start kind of with, again, a brief summary of how we go through the budget process and how we connect and communicate and gather information and talk through how we get to that point of coming to the board. So working our way backwards from June 30, which is the statute requirement that we must have an adopted budget by the school board by June 30 of each fiscal year to begin the next fiscal year. So we work our way backwards towards that. And this year, as we have shared, and we have our fingers crossed right now that we'll be doing that at the regular school board meeting in June to bring forward a proposed adopted budget. If you recall, last year, we had to have a special board meeting kind of right at the bitter end of June because ESAR was, we were getting new information on a daily basis and we weren't really sure how to actively put in a budget if we had a lot of unknowns at the time. So we had asked last year to have a budget adoption special meeting just for that, really towards the way end of June. But right now, we believe we can have an adopted recommended budget to the board for the regular school board meeting in June. If we find that the legislature has some things that could be materially changing us or funding, we may ask for a delay. But right now, I think we're going to go with what we know and we can always do a budget revision after the fact. And speaking of the legislature, as I know many of you are following the legislature closely and trying to understand where we're going to end up. Right now, again, we know that Conference Committee for Education is in process. I think most of you know that Superintendent Vegas testified yesterday on behalf of Special Education Cross Subsidy, also reshared the specific ask of Duluth Public Schools in relation to our special education funding anomaly that has plagued us since 2016. And again, if you look at the proposals from the House and the Senate in relation to education finance and education policy, they're very far apart. And so we're not sure, we have not received really any indication on what those compromise positions are going to be. But right now, we're unsure of what, if any, new additional funding school districts will see in relation to any of those items, even including any basic allowance. We'll talk briefly when we get to that. But we do know that we are getting a 2% bump in the basic allowance based on legislation from last year. We're in the second year of a biennium and that was a component piece of our process that they are giving us a 2%. Of course, we'd love to have more, so we continue to advocate for that. But right now, that's what we're budgeting on, is just the guarantee of what we know right now. So, and we'll talk a little bit about what we might potentially be projected to see if we can see some changes. So working our way from how we kind of started the process is we always look at about the midpoint of the year to see where our current year budget is. Are there things that we're on track for? Are there things that we added or subtracted to? And that becomes kind of our foundational topic points going into next year. I think what's important to point out here for board members is our commitment has been that we are utilizing ESAR funds to maintain the FY '21, which was, in a sense, FY '20, our staffing and programming models as much as we could using ESAR funds. So knowing that Duluth Public Schools lost over 500 students to enrollment during the fiscal year '21 school year due to the pandemic, looking at our projected enrollment, it is still close to over 300 students down from pre-pandemic, which would be June 30, 2020. Without those students, we know that we'd have a lot less revenue. So we are infusing ESAR dollars to maintain the same programs and services, which makes everything a little more complicated in terms of how we would normally calculate, assess, and then allocate based on operational with or without ESAR. So when we talked at the board meeting in April, and we'll talk about that again, we essentially talked about what the operational revenues would look like without ESAR and then moved into the expenditure side and then said, here's what we have to, what we're projecting to infuse to keep everything status quo. So what we have right now is basically the same basic programming and allocations from our operational fund as we had prior to the pandemic or the first year of the pandemic, 2021. So as, and I know we've talked about this several times during some of our Business Services Committee meetings and at committees of the whole, when ESAR funds are depleted, we're going to have to have important conversations about how do we maintain a balanced budget when we've been using a significant portion of ESAR funds to maintain our current program and servicing model. So as we did that in January and February and we're looking at our enrollments, and if you recall, we asked the board in February to change our adopted budget revenues. We had, back a year ago, June, had hoped we would maybe target about 8180 students. That's what we budgeted on in June of 2020, which was still down from where we were pre-pandemic. But we had projected that we would see reenrollments coming into the fall of 2021. In February, we realized with the work of Cattery Little and other folks who are projecting enrollment, we realized we probably aren't going to hit that target. So we had adjusted our revenues down to base it off of 8,005 students. So we came from 8180 down to 8,005. If you've looked through the Business Committee enrollment projections that were presented on Tuesday, we're at 8,006 as a new projection. So we feel like we're kind of on the mark now in terms of where we think we're going to be. And that's due to a lot of hard work by Cattery, who does our MARS work. But again, those will continue to update and change towards the end of the year because that's through April. So we still have May and June for things to adjust and change from there. So any questions, I just want to make sure, any questions on enrollment of how we got to that 8,000 and now we're projecting 7985? Yeah?
I guess my question is on these handouts too. Do we not include the ALC numbers in this and in the 8,005?
The 8,005, they are included. For just purposes of FTE right now, we're still working with ALC. We had a meeting last week with them and they're still going through their lists and working with HR to make sure they have the right FTE assigned because they're a combined organization. Some of their ADO and ALC folks share and they're working through in HR to make sure we're putting them in the right category.
Are their numbers a little more dynamic, I guess?
They're very dynamic and down right now. So we're working to make sure that we're as aggressive as we can be with those numbers so that we have an accurate count as we go into staffing for next year.
Can you tell me again the projected enrollment you're looking at for next year?
7985. And keep in mind.
I thought you said 8,005, but so it's 7985.
Well, that was for this year.
For this year?
Yep. And that was, when we did that in February, we were projecting 7985. I think 79, 79, 8, 7885. And we've bumped it up since then, but we're going to go slightly conservative here. And part of the reason, if everyone recalls, Marshall School is expanding their non-public to grades one through three. So they've added an elementary non-public. And then Stella Maris has added grades nine and 10 for non-public in the high school. So we felt like knowing that there could be some student re-enrollment due to those expanded that may, otherwise, we would have probably budgeted very similar, which would have been a little over 8,000. Any other questions on enrollment? So as we continued to develop the estimates for revenues, because we needed that student count, that student estimate, because we know that enrollment drives the majority of our revenues, right? That per pupil amount. We do a thing called the What If and a Revenue Projection Model that gives us estimates for both state and some of our federal spending targets. So we utilize those pieces from the Department of Education. And that, if everybody wants to pull this document out that I handed out, you can see that overall with student counts and looking at our estimates here, that we are projecting just for the general fund. This is funds one, three, and five, 113.6 million. This will include federal dollars, local dollars, and our state dollars. And as we think through that, and again, utilizing a lower adjusted average daily membership, or ADM, that would mean that we're going to have less dollars. And then just noting again that this is taking this revenue into account, that these are not the infused ESAR dollars, we're going to talk about those separately. This would be just the operational budget that we would run without the support of ESAR at this point. Does that make sense to everybody? So as we're looking at page one and as we're looking at that first kind of preview of dollars, we're projecting 113.6 million in local, state, and federal, in the general fund. Next meeting, we'll be talking about food service, community service, debt service, our internal service funds, including our dental, our trust, and others. So we'll be talking about those in a little bit more detail. But the biggest portion of our entire budget is that general operating budget. So we wanted to spend time on there so you felt like you had a good handle on those pieces. So once we started, yep.
Just, I'm just going to, this is for another topic, really. But as you continue to educate us and as I continue to learn more about how enrollment is pretty darn important. So if you, you know, as my role as a teacher, so, so how, is there anybody that oversees how we are counting our ADMs and making sure? I mean, Cattery does an incredible job. We give her monthly reports and I can't imagine there's this one person that's gathering all of this data. But does that, does that trickle down to, I'll just use myself as an example, like Jill Lowfald, making sure she takes adequate attendance in her hourly classes?
No, attendance is not how it drives ADM, but that's a great question. Attendance, I shouldn't say that. If you chronically count someone absent 15 days in a row, their MARS record drops, which means we'll stop collecting revenue. If kids are sick three days in a row and they come back to school, doesn't matter. That student is still considered enrolled and we're still continuing to collect general education revenue on that student. A student drops after 15 consecutive days of non-attendance. On every single day, we will have new enrollments in, we will have students leaving for any other purposes. So we have a pretty volatile enrollment and you can see that if you were to go through each month's enrollment projections. Enrollments really start at the site or department level, most likely with your clericals. So the clericals who are putting in those enrollments into Infinite Campus. And Cattery, hands down, folks, we have one of the most talented people in the state of Minnesota. She is amazing. She's actually one of the co-chairs of, there's a whole big wholesale database change happening at the state of Minnesota called EDBI. Have you heard about that, maybe through MSBA or other models? This has been extremely difficult for MARS people across the state of Minnesota. And Cattery is one of the lead people that's working with the Department of Education. She'll be sharing some information, I think, with us and with the board and probably with the state on some of the complexities related to that and how I think their cohort is going to ask for some consideration by the department to slow that down. We have a current database at MDE. And as we know, our small little conversion from Business Plus to Skyward has its own set of challenges. Imagine trying to do an entire state database conversion, so. But starting at the clericals, all of the records that go through Infinite Campus are what calculates to what calculates our ADM. So if someone's missing, if someone hasn't been enrolled through Infinite Campus, we won't get any money. The other big thing that happens for schools is that at the end of every year, we submit all of our files to the Department of Education. And if there are students enrolled in two or more districts at the same time, no one gets any money for that student until they fight it out and somebody has to fix their record. So if, for example, Chair Lowfald unenrolls on March 31 and she was there that day for Duluth Public Schools, but the school she's going to enroll her to start on March 31, there's two records that are going to crash and they're going to say, I'm sorry, somebody has to change their date. Every district gets an error list and they go through and identify the student or the student record. And then they go through and talk through that. And sometimes it can get, it can get interesting. And so.
Want to play for that moment?
Absolutely. And knowing that our teams get some really good education from Cattery and her team, our clericals understand the importance and the value. We've had districts who have not realized what can happen if students aren't accurately enrolled. Where I used to work in a consortium, we had a few districts over the years who got brand-new people. And they didn't know until after the close of the window that there were dozens of students who hadn't been recorded correctly. So those are just losses of revenue. So from that, from that perspective of enrollment, it starts at the clerical, it starts at the program level. Our principals, I think, do an excellent job of monitoring their enrollment. They kind of understand, I think, at any one time, they know how many students are in their building, they know how many students are in their grade levels. They're watching those things. But there is a very distinct difference between attendance and enrollment. So kids could be missing and we're still earning money on those. So, but if kids have been missing for an extended period of time or their MARS record is inaccurate, then we could lose money. Did that help?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And wearing my hat as a teacher thing, I too, I'm going like, oh, I think I marked that kid one wrong, you know?
Yeah.
But, you know, then it could have cost us.
To your point, though, it's good to remember that the state of Minnesota, as one of their benchmarks for a federal audit, was attendance for students across the state. They are tracking that, they are collecting attendance data as well as enrollment data. So it is important that we're making sure that attendance is recorded as correctly as possible because I think the state is getting audited by how we're seeing attendance rates throughout the state. So it is, it doesn't necessarily drive our funding, but I know it is a large component piece of the Department of Education right now. So, and please pause and ask questions wherever. I want to make sure everybody feels that this is an open dialogue. So again, I'm trying to think back to our process. So as we look at enrollment and we start looking at these first pieces, our next step was really to start assessing our staffing, where we had our staffing. And I just want to give a huge shout out to Teresa and her Human Resource Team. As you all know, we converted from Business Plus to Skyward. Anytime you have a new system and you have a new process, making sure that we have all of our people and all of our records accurate was something that we've been spending the last, gosh, six months, working through and working through that with our building leaders and our department leaders to make sure that all of the people that we have are being recorded correctly. So we found a great report through Simone and her work and her partnership with Skyward. We then shared that with Human Resources. Human Resources built reports for every building and every program, the person, their assignment, their FTE, their wage, to make sure that we had the right people in the right buildings with the right teaching assignment and the right FTE to go along with them. We found many, many mistakes. There was either conversion mistakes or just clarification mistakes. With ESAR, we have many staff who are being coded to designated ESAR accounts. And when they rolled over, they didn't roll over with those new specific, because they're temporary codes. So we are seeing many updates and changes. And I just want to say that our HR team has been working tirelessly with our staff. And I do want to give a shout out to our building leaders and our program leaders because they're the ones who know. We're not in the buildings every day. They know who's in their buildings, teaching what subjects, how many periods of day are they teaching? Do they have other assignments? You know, special education gets pretty complicated because we have multiple people teaching with multiple disability codes. So they might be teaching different places. And Angela Seth, who is in our special, she's kind of our finance coordinator in the Special Services Department, does not a fantastic job of trying to rein all those pieces in to make sure that we follow those pieces. Because if you remember, when we get to those expenditures, special education is a huge chunk of this large piece of the budget. So that's where things can sort of get complicated too. So as we kind of walk through those. So as we did that then, we had meetings with building leaders and program departments in March and said, here's kind of, and if you look at these two documents here, this is kind of a summary. Each building got a detailed one for their building, which showed just their information. And you've seen this each year for the past years that I've been here to share this. And this is kind of what we're saying based on our commitment to keeping FTE very similar to what it was last year and the year before. These were where we are for this point. I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did, just, you said in March you had meetings with building leaders. So were those the principals, assistant principals?
Principals, yep. And then we had representatives from Human Resources, Special Education, and Finance. And these were confirmation meetings to say, hey, here's what we have, here's what we think we have in our system. Could we please kind of confirm what we think we have? And then we took notes, we created the lists. And then from there, we had checks to make sure that all the staffing that we felt we had recognized through our systems and the reports that we had, do they tie out to what's actually in the system right now and who's actually in the buildings right now? Because we can pull out a list and say, here's what we're going to say. And then we had buildings going, oh, no, that person's now at Piedmont or this person's here. So that's what they did was they got information, data from us. They did the double checks and worked back with HR so we could make corrections.
So you had in-person meetings, you gave them information, they reported back to you?
Yes. They were virtual, most were virtual, although three or four, five came in person. We did have some in person. We were trying to be flexible with time and we know how busy. Yep. So that was round one. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Sandholm, did you have a question?
Oh, you're done with?
Yep.
I guess I just wanted to just a quick glance at the average class sizes.
Yes.
Are we, I'm just, I'm going through this. And I have to ask about a couple of situations. Are we going to try to address these before next fall when we have 37 in a fifth grade class average class size at Lester Park? Almost 35 in an average class. It looks like a little Spanish immersion, which I understand that might have some other difficulties in finding staff to fill in, fill in here. So how do we address those issues when? I'm sure you're going to hear from staffs and administrators that this is not tenable.
Great, and thank you for that. Because what I should have done was updated Lester Park because where that FTE right now is in fourth grade. And they'll probably move that FTE, that fourth section from fourth grade to fifth grade next year.
Or do a split?
I don't think they're going to do a split because even if you went down to three with 83, that would be closer to 27. So they'll probably move that FTE. I know that there's some, so we have had some requests. I think school board members have maybe received correspondence from families related to, you know, boy, we'd like to see more FTE. The messaging that our administrative team has given to our buildings is, right now, we're keeping with what we have based on the budget that's currently balanced. If we are able to find that we have areas in which we're going to switch or try to provide different, that we may come up with FTE. And if we do see that there's going to be a specific enrollment, because what we also know is, this is what we're estimating right now, what happens in July and August. And when we get to those numbers, each year, we make that adjustment. This past year, we did add an FTE at Lakewood. They went and got that elementary. Laura MacArthur got a title FTE that we had some carryover dollars in title. So they went from 16 to 17. So we are planning on that, but as of today, we're kind of trying to hold and ask them to look at where their total FTE is and if they can make adjustments. So like in your case, we would move that three to a four to the fifth grade. So that number will get better, but then fourth grade will bump up a little bit. Does that help?
That helps.
Yeah.
When does the, you know, we passed that, oh, God, I can't think of the right term I want to use here. The voters passed.
Operating referendum?
Operating referendum for class sizes a couple of years ago. When does that expire?
That expires 10 years from 2018, so 2027.
And again, that's, you know, I want to tie that to this too. I mean, I hope we're using and recognizing that, that voters want to make sure we have class sizes that are proper for grade levels.
Yeah.
As best we can.
Yep, and Member Sandholm, thanks for bringing that up. And I do want to clarify that I arrived at Duluth Public Schools probably one month to the day before the referendum. And what we found out, at least what we found out after the audit, was we didn't have any money. We were in, we would have been in statutory operating debt had we not had activities funds that made us look like we had $300,000 in the bank. So what was explained at the time, what was explained to the board and the public was that those dollars were used to maintain what we have. I know there was documents and things that were shared with the public that we were going to hire 25 new teachers.
18, I believe.
Okay, whatever the number was, what that, what those dollars did was help us avoid most likely cutting 18 teachers because the budget couldn't withstand the pressures that we had. Does that help?
That helps.
Yeah. Member Oswald?
Thank you.
This is kind of tied in with Member Sandholm. I know in the past, it was practiced that the buildings are awarded their full complement of FTE and it's the buildings that decide how to spread them out among their grade levels. Does that still occur?
So right now, because ESAR is involved, things are a little more complicated. So the TLE department, especially with the allocation of additional interventionists and other support staff that we haven't had in the past, those allocations are working through the TLE team and they're trying to provide as much flexibility as possible. I'll defer to Assistant Superintendent Bonds. Is that a fair?
No, that's a first name.
Yeah, so, but in terms of regular classroom FTE, yep. They normally would just, you know, it's hard to move things. yep, they, they normally would just, you know, it's hard to move things around, right? I mean, our enrollment seems fairly stable, even though it's lower than it has been in the past. It seems like it's going to be stable from this year to next year. So how they're allocating their FTE right now as classroom FTE is what they're working with.
I just know in previous discussions that, you know, say a building would have, you know, thirty-two kids, up for thirty-two kids in a fifth grade class to have lower kindergarten numbers and that kind of thing. And so then when parents would come to us and say, you know, why is this so much? Our answer, you know, should have been and could have been and probably was, you know, that the building decides how to best use their, you know, allocations to meet their goals and what they want. And we don't need to tell them what to do.
Right.
And so is that still happening?
Yes. And I do want to say, in all of the conversations that we had with building leaders is that they take very seriously the thoughts of their CITs. And so most all of them bring back what they have and what potential changes they might ask or request or change, working with their building level CITs. That was one thing that we heard over and over again. I do want to share that this is, does not include special education. Special education is a little more complicated. How we have to distribute FTE is often based IEP-wise and some of the settings that have requirements of only being able to have so many students in a classroom. So sometimes that's not, that can fluctuate year to year depending on where students are. For example, right now, we have a set of students moving from Lincoln Park to Denfeld. So we have program, a program that's closing at Lincoln. And it may look like they're getting less, but they're actually just moving to Denfeld because the majority of the students they're serving are actually moving to Denfeld. So when you look at just a building out of context, it may look like, oh, how come they're getting less? It's really a lot of transitional things between elementary to middle and middle to high. And then in addition to that, with special education, we and Superintendent Magus shared this at the testimony yesterday. We have more students in special education now than we did two years ago, pre-pandemic with more students. So even though we have less overall students, our, this year, December, so December one of two thousand and twenty, our unduplicated child count was seventeen hundred and forty-four. Public and non-public students are receiving services through Duluth Public Schools. And we have Jason Crane shared during this week, as we reconnected with building leaders last Friday, Monday and Tuesday, we have over ninety students in evaluation right now in our regular grade levels for special education. And we had sixteen birth-to-two identified children who are also going to be needing services. So we're working with the early childhood folks to try to do some expedited extended contracts for the summer so they can provide some services to those students because that's a year-round obligation. That's not just a school year obligation to provide services for our birth-to-two identified students. And keeping in mind that most, oftentimes those students are identified by another agency. That's not necessarily the district doing the evaluation. There's been an evaluation that's triggers that there be support from the school district. But we are continuing to see an increase in the number of students in the evaluation right now.
Can you, two questions. You started mentioning some numbers. You mentioned ninety students being evaluated, sixteen birth-to-two, but you've mentioned another larger number.
Seventeen hundred and forty-four is the number of students that were identified, unduplicated students who are receiving special education services, both public and non-public. I believe the number, and I'm sorry, I don't have that sheet right in front of me. I believe eighty-eight students are non-public and the remainder are Duluth Public School students.
And then more for the, anyone who might be listening. When you reference that you're meeting with building leaders and they're working with their CITs, would you just say what that acronym is so the public hears that?
Yes.
What that means?
Thank you. So each building takes grade level leaders and they form a collaboration. So their groups within their buildings work together to work towards goals. They work towards recommendations of things within their building, ranging anywhere from test scores and results to curriculum and other recommendations that they have. So those continuous improvement teams or CIT are those groups that each building is working on. There is some district level support to make sure that those cohorts are getting up and running. But we have some really active and very powerful groups in our, in our buildings right now working with their building leaders to make sure that there's good communication, to make sure that we can work through those things. Thank you for, I forget acronyms sometimes.
And I, and I know you, yeah, so if we can, when there's acronyms, make sure we spell them out. And I know all of us around the room know what an IEP is, but I know there's people who don't. So also, would you do that if we're going to talk about specialized?
Yes, so individualizing.
Yeah, I'll add something real quickly. The continuous improvement teams are also meant to ensure that there are teacher voice or there is teacher voice at the table. So teachers are part of those teams, as well as other support staff are part of those teams when it comes to decision-making and science.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so when we think about those individual educational plans, those IEPs, those are really critical because they drive what student needs or student requirements are. There are CLPs that happen in our ALC and in our other plans where we are receiving other money. So those are individualized learning plans for those students who aren't on IEPs. But they also have a plan that we have to sign off on to make sure that they're going, when they're going through an alternative learning program, that their parent is aware what the programming is and what certain improvements we want to work towards. So especially for our summer school and our educational credit recovery, we have to show that identification. And those teams have done a really nice job of trying to get those in advance. Those are some of the things we struggle, struggled to get because we have to prove those to the state. Yeah.
So are we looking at a significant jump in the number of students we're working with going into next year? And is there pandemic connection to this?
That's a great question. I think Jason Crane would be a great person. Maybe I can invite him to our next budget.
He's always invited.
Yeah. Well, I'll make him come and just have documents ready for you to share. But he would, he would know more. I know that it's really important for us to recognize that, and I had a great conversation, I can't remember with who, when we talked about special education. Because I think each person, when, when you think about, like if I asked everybody in the room right now to think about, what do you visualize when you see a special education student? Like what, what type of characteristics does that student have? The reality is they could have so many things. There's the academic piece, there's the behavioral piece, there's the physical, there's the, there's so many things that relate to special education. And I think that as a school district, and I will bring that next time too, we did a chart last year that shows all the different disability categories. And so we know that a lot of, like, for example, speech. That happens to be one that's been growing in our district where we're having more students. But speech oftentimes is a quick pullout. It's not an area in which they're needing to spend a lot of minutes in a room getting support. But when you have a student who may be in an ASD room for autism or we have more higher disability, or it's just a specific learning disability in reading or math, they may be getting intervention support. And they're just going in and getting pullouts versus something different. And the settings, when you hear about settings one, two and three, that's the measurement of how much time they're outside of a traditional classroom and getting support in either a resource room or a program room. So one of the things that Jason Crane has shared, I think all the building level principals and leaders know this, is that we are seeing a, a request to review behaviors. We have the EBD, the emotional behavior disorder category. We're seeing more requests to provide supports in that area. So Jason has been working with buildings to look at models within their building on how we can support those students. So I think that that's a key area as we look at all those. But right now, we also know that the goal is to phase people out of special education when we can. What I think is more of the norm in education now so far is that once you're in special education, you spend many years within special education with an IEP. But the goal is to work towards having those students advance out of. So our hope is that yes, we are probably going to see an increase in the number of students with IEPs in our district next fall. That being said, we'll have to also wait to see which students have either aged out or are out of the process because they've improved and don't need those services. Does that help? So right now, we won't know until the actual unduplicated child counts. But hearing what we're hearing from Jason and others, and not that every child is going to qualify, but we are hearing that a high percentage of those in evaluation do have enough qualifications that they would. And I think Superintendent Magus was hoping to check in.
Sure. Just a little side note to that. And thank you CFO Erickson for the information. We are also finding that the severity of need is greater for many of our special education students. As we've mentioned, the unmet learning needs are growing. And an example of that that I talked to Director Crane about was that we, we have approximately twice as many students qualifying for extended, extended year schooling, which is kind of reserved for, for some of the students with the greatest needs. And so the needs of our students are, it's not just the number that we're seeing, but we're also seeing a greater need of our student as well. And that's part of the reason why we were testifying yesterday before the joint finance committee, hoping to get some, some of the funding back because of the funding anomaly, but also the cross-subsidy funding issue that we have talked about throughout the state.
One of the numbers that Superintendent Magus shared yesterday in testimony is from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-one, Duluth Public Schools cross subsidy was forty-two point three seven million dollars. That is our combined net adjusted cross subsidy, which is the difference between the revenues we receive related, state revenues related to special education and how much we spend on special education. So that is collectively, you know, it ranges between, right now, I think we're in the mid-seven millions. We've been all the way up to nine billion in different years. And part of that challenge for us is the volatility of tuition billing. Because we have many students who are tuition billing at another school district, at a charter school. And how the current setup is, is that those are not bills that we pay on the expense side. It is the state does all the work and gives us less revenue. So we don't actually see that on our books. If somebody asked us, how much do you pay in tuition billing? Simone could not go into Skyward and look at our expenditures. We would actually have to go to a state report that would say, here's how many school districts have charged you, here's how much we've agreed to take out of your revenues. And on the flip side of that, we do bill ourselves. We say, here are all the kids who are coming to Duluth Public Schools. Unfortunately, we have more students, more districts billing us than we're billing out. So that becomes a net loss to the district. Any, these are so great questions and you know, don't hesitate to ask any of those questions. I want to make sure, I feel like I'm a little bit out of pace for the things I wanted to make sure I was sharing. But going back to where we were pacing on how we're communicating with our building leaders and how we're getting to a point of understanding where our staffing levels are, is back in March, we had those first round meetings, which we provided information. We asked building leaders to reach out to our human resources team and to try to clarify and make sure that we have all people accurately identified. Going back to that baseline of, yes, you can move forward with the positions you have. Also during this time is the recognition of retirements and transfers and those people that, shoot, I'm losing, what do you do when it's a temporary?
Displacements.
Displacements. So we, our HR team, in the midst of doing all those other things, also had to create that entire process to make sure that those folks who, and keep in mind, displacement sounds like a punitive thing, but many of our positions, when they're a one-year position or they started after a certain date, it's just an automatic thing. And we may be posting that position immediately and they can go grab that position. But due to the process and due to the contractual obligations we have, sometimes we have to displace a person, repost the position. So HR did a great job working with our buildings to make sure that everybody had the list of who HR identified as those potential displacements, retirements and openings. And now, and just so you all know, the process is, the buildings create a requisition to create a job posting for the positions in their building. So it isn't that HR just does a creation and says, here's, here's where they are. It's recognizing, does everybody agree to the list? And then the buildings will create those requisitions. They work through the finance team to make sure it's being correctly coded and budgeted. It goes through the HR team and then that's what triggers a job posting.
And I think I've seen some.
Yes.
Many, well, which is great.
Is there a time limit to when principals need to create that requisition? As in, you know, like if they know this, this job is, is going to be empty, you know, for next year and they wait, can they literally wait until August twenty-ninth before opening or posting on the posting?
I'm going to defer to Teresa Sandholm.
They can, but they shouldn't. But oftentimes they don't, I mean, oftentimes they're not holding it, they just don't know. Kind of to Kathy's point on some of the staffing, if they're switching within what they need in their building, they don't necessarily know what they want to hire for too. So, but yes, there is no contractual obligation that when they know there's opening, they have to post it.
So, and if they posted, is it after July thirty-first or July first? I don't know if there was a change in contractual in that. Then it becomes one of those one-year postings?
Yeah, one day, twenty-four hour posting.
And it's a one, it's a one-year, or?
Yes.
I, I was told we shouldn't be using the word temporary, there's another term for it.
Right.
It's, it's just a one-year job.
We're, we're trying to get away from them waiting until the last minute, which is, and push up our, our process. Because what happens is it pushes everybody down when there's those late postings because it creates potentially a cascade of other postings. And then sometimes we're hiring after the one year already started, which is not great for anyone.
I do want to clarify to member Sandholm's point. We did post all of the ESER positions specifically as temporary because they were one-year positions that we had not intended to replace. A twenty-four hour posting is a little bit different because it may end up being a permanent position or a position moving forward. But we, we felt it was really important to make sure that people understood because most of those positions were filled internally. And that was the process with the look back rights and other pieces that were, that we made sure that HR and our bargaining units were comfortable with knowing that while we were very excited that people wanted to maybe delve into some newer temporary positions that we had, that they would be able to move back to their original position, which might cause other people to cascade and move around. So ESER, that was another, another complicating factor. But to your point, we don't, I don't think we post the twenty-four hour positions as temporary, but we did write on all of the ESER positions. I believe they both said ESER and temporary.
Yes.
Yes. Because we wanted to make sure folks knew that.
And how many ESER positions were there?
Yeah. So we're going to, can, can I answer that when we go through the?
Sure.
Awesome. But that's a great question. We did hire lots of people. So we'll, we'll talk through that. So again, just want to say, here's where we are today, May twelfth. We've just finished our second round of reconnections with our building leaders. This was mostly in relation to special education. So Jason Crane took the lead in most of these meetings that we had. Again, starting last Friday, we had several on Monday, Thursday, Friday, Monday. And again, was just kind of giving folks an update on what options they may have in terms of special education services. I do want to share that I know there's been a lot of talk about what we call related services. Those would be things like social workers, psychologists, counselors and others. And obviously, we, we see and understand that there's a great need for those types of support staff. And many of those staff in Duluth Public Schools are funded through special education. But in buildings that have chosen to make that a priority versus, say, other things within their buildings, some of them have used other funding sources to supplement those related services with additional folks. And that's going to be a great conversation coming into the next year or two on how do we fit in all of those needs and making sure that they all fit. So Jason has shared right now, because a lot of the related services FTE are based on how many students are in the building with IEPs, that he has to wait to understand how many students are going to be in those. that he has to wait to understand how many students are going to be in those areas. So he may have to adjust some of his related services. So, he's working within, you know, a twenty-four to twenty-five million dollar budget. Some of our federal dollars are not spent on people, so we kind of have this larger scale. And if you remember, you know, eighty percent of our budget is people. So of those dollars, that's almost all teaching staff and support staff. And so, he's needing to find adjustments versus investments. So, if people want more related services staff, they may have to look at their either resource room or program room models. They may have to do some adjustments there in order for us to look at. So that's what he's working with the buildings right now.
So, in kind of these upcoming meetings, are you suggesting that you'll have Jason Crane come in?
Sure.
So we can just dive into a little bit more and a better understanding on specialized funding?
Jason Crane is at a workshop right now, so I know he's not watching, but he'll be so excited to hear that he's invited to the next meeting, so.
What can we do? Chocolate? What can we do here?
We'll ask him to bring the caramels that he made for us last month because they were amazing. So he's talented in a lot of levels. But can I put that on you, Anthony, to send a note to Jason to invite him to the May twenty-fifth committee of the whole meeting? That would be much appreciated. Thank you. So, I just want to make sure, we're on May twelve, we're having our first meeting. We have two more meetings to come to kind of dig into a little bit more our staff, our building leaders, our hearing about staffing. And again, that's the majority, kind of the big pieces of our budget. We'll also be working with some of our departments too. We have communicated with TLE that, you know, we have departments within the departments. We have American Indian Education. We have our curriculum and those curriculum expenditures. We have our Achievement and Integration Team. We have our Climate and Culture Teams. So we'll be working with each of them to say, you know, here's what we have as part of our budget and work through how we're going to carry those over. The other thing we want to remember, and we'll look at that when we get to the expense side, the biggest piece of why the expenditure side is changing is because we're having settled contracts. So now that we know what some of those settlement amounts are, we're building those into that next year's budget too. And I think I shared this at the school board meeting, but as a reminder, health insurance went up six percent. And that is equating to about one point one million dollars. So, overall bargaining units, overall departments, that's going to be another investment of about one point one million dollars. So, had nothing else changed in the district, we still would have had to come up with a million dollars just to help qualify for our health insurance. So, as, just, I want to make sure, do people feel comfortable with how this process is going? So people understand that we are meeting, we're walking through these pieces. We're going with that foundational understanding that this budget is going to be very similar to the current year's budget and the prior year's budget, and we're using ESER to backfill for this coming year so that we're not doing budget reductions per se. But we are looking at things, and we're going to start having some important conversations about as we are needing to phase out of ESER and we don't have ESER funds, what are the things we're going to be working on? And such important pieces like the strategic planning process and other pieces are going to play into, how will we adjust the budget when there isn't backfill, isn't supporting revenue to help get that done? So.
Just a quick question that I know we've talked a lot about the meetings we've had and that determines their FTE. But what else about, is it in the next round of meetings you have where you actually allocate money to these, to our buildings? Or right now, is your conversation based on enrollment and staff? Do we, are we budgeting money per people unit, the two percent we're not, so?
They get FTE. So, one of the realities about buildings and budgets is, depending on the teacher, we can have a teacher that's valued at seventy thousand dollars, and we can have a teacher that's valued at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And so, we don't give money, we give FTE, and we don't say whether what they're valued at is what the building gets. So we're really structured on people. They will all get supply budgets. We do have instructional supply budgets. We have general supply budgets. We have facilities budgets that go through the facilities department. But they don't get just a big pile of money to decide what they want to do with. They get FTE to decide what to do with it.
Because I remember my first year, I mean, not the others, this previous CFO gave the board a graph. Does anybody else remember that, where each building had this allocation of funds? Was that just a different way of budgeting or processing, or?
I will say that if you're budgeting money, chances are that might be one of the reasons why we ran out of money. So, we really, we really work our way backwards to what is the allocation. Then we work behind the scenes to make sure we're reporting that correctly. So, we want to make sure staffing is important, and then those supply budgets, the range of supply budgets that they have. So, it isn't a dumb, so, like, for example, when I came to the district, title was, buildings were putting their cheapest teachers coded under title, thinking that that meant that they could get more general fund money to spend on other things. And we got audited. That was, my first day of work here, we were getting audited, and they said, "You absolutely can't do this." So we had to redesign our entire title budget to accurately reflect where those are. And so what that meant to me, and that's what we've embedded now for the past three years, is that it isn't the money, it's the FTE and the allocations that are important. So, but specific things like title, and that's overseen by Darren Sheldon and his team, they may have specific initiatives where they may put money towards professional development. They may put money towards equipment. Those things he does through his own title allocations and working with those elementary principals to make sure that those are correct. Keeping in mind that not every elementary building is a title building, so that isn't a equally distributed fund.
Will you be going over later on a little bit more about that allocation of money for supplies?
Yes.
To help us better understand?
Yes, be happy to do that. And overall, and I don't know if, I think I shared this last time, actually, if we were just to look in our budget on the expenditure side, on this last page, but in the inside, is the bar graph. District-wide, for the four hundred, oh shoot, this isn't the one, I'm sorry, this isn't the one. But if you were to look at our expenditures by object series, ooh, that may be on, under supplies and materials, we spend, Duluth Public Schools spends five point eight million of a hundred and fifteen, hundred and eighteen million on supplies. And that includes, I'm sorry, it's on, I'm sorry, it's on this sheet.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And this is FY twenty-one final, five point eight million dollars. That includes transportation supply budgets, transportation supply budgets. We just don't have billions and billions of dollars in supplies because, again, most of our money is wrapped up in people. So, you probably have heard building leaders say, "I give my teachers," you know, and as former teachers, you've probably got maybe a hundred dollars of a supply budget or two hundred and fifty dollars of a supply budget. And what I'm hearing from building leaders is, you know, as, as those funds are, especially at the high school level, we have some departments and some programs that if you're an art teacher, you're going to need way more supplies than an English teacher. So, distributing it equally doesn't always make sense. So the building leaders are working with their teams and their building-level CITs to make sure those distribution happens. One of the other things we'll talk about at our next meeting is CTE, and those programmings because we are seeing more and more interest in the career and technical education models. And those have some really high costs in relation to equipment and maintenance of equipment in those programs in order to make those successful. When you think about an automotive class or a food class where we need refrigeration and other large pieces of equipment, we have to work through, what does that look like for Duluth Public Schools to maintain those and have a replacement schedule for those pieces of equipment? So similar to like our bus, where we have each year, we put some money aside to make sure we can replace old buses. The district has never had a committed, assigned fund to make sure that we can afford the replacement of a lot of those pieces of equipment. So that's one thing that, Dinette and her team, Dinette is kind of coordinating it at the high school level with some folks at Denfeld. And she is, we're working our way to try to find ways in which we can propose that as part of future conversations to keep those programs sustainable as well. So yes, in our next meeting, we'll talk a little bit more about the supply budgets and how those have been allocated. Last year, it might have been the year before, when Peggy Blaylock was here, one of the things we had realized too was that the office supply budgets had not grown, and the cost of paper had come up quite a bit. So, we had actually increased every building's general supply budget to make sure that they could afford a lease payment on a copier and to be able to buy paper and to be able to buy office supplies because some buildings didn't have enough money to do those things. So, we worked with every building and we kind of bumped those up a little bit to make sure that they could be able to afford all those things. So, we'll talk through all those.
So, I'd like to pursue it. So, when we're, when we're meeting with our buildings, are you, are we still, I can remember our first meetings with you when setting budgets, tell me what you need? Is that still a vision that you have when you sit down with our staff? The reason I'm somewhat just looking at and, and again, I think this is a great conversation.
Yes.
Just more learning and it's more, I'm asking questions more just out of maybe ignorance than out of, you know, you know, any, any strategy or anything.
Yeah.
So, I just wonder about the need of some of our buildings that have higher population of either sped students or higher population of students not meeting goals of reading well by third grade. And how do those building leaders come to you and say, "Yeah, I might only have forty kindergartners, but twenty in a class of of high-needs students who haven't been given preschool or haven't had support in their educational journey up till year five, twenty is still high." So where are we going? How are building leaders advocating for themselves? And how, as we as a board, if we don't really know those needs, how do, how do we know as a board that our value of equity and of helping our students that have, you know, needs? Even in our building of, you know, sixty-three, and with a class size of, you know, twenty-one? I don't know, you know, it just, where are we at with that? I guess, you know, hidden in all of this, but I know the answer to this, is where are we doing our compensatory dollars that go to our schools that have a highest need?
So, great question.
Could be a whole nother meeting, but.
It could be, but when you look at these, and you look at this sheet, that especially kind of looking at the elementary, because that's where we see a lot of our investment. When you look at those buildings that have a lower-than-average class size, that's where the compensatory money is going. They are, they are using some of their dollars as classroom teachers because they believe that class size reduction is a value in their building. Now, does every building do that? Nope. Some buildings use interventionists, which aren't on here, but they're in their site-based budgets because they've decided that intervention works better than class size reduction. And we've had some great questions and conversation here in the district about, is there value to having those collective conversations where, do we as a district have a vision of the value of class size versus intervention versus? And I think that's where this, it comes back to the CITs, right? And working with our educational leaders to say, is whatever we're choosing to do, whichever pathway we're choosing to do, leading to better results? And if it's not, are there other ways and other pathways that we're going to look at that? But when you see these classroom FTEs, some of these are being paid by title. Some of these are being paid for by compensatory. Some of these are being paid for just by the general fund. At Lowell, some of them, and Myers, are being paid for by OBE. So, there are different types of funds paying for some of these classroom teachers. And I think, you know, there used to be kind of this, people thought of it as an extra bucket that we got to go fill every year. It's not. It's built into the budget every year and is fully spent every year. So, when we roll into the next year, you either have to decide, "I'm going to do exactly the same things I did before because that money has already been allocated that way," or you go back to your CIT, you work with the TLE team and say, "You know what? This year, I'm going to take one of my classroom teachers and I'm going to make it a reading interventionist instead because I think that might lead to a better outcome." Now, that, we need to make sure everybody understands why they're doing it, that they're in agreement for it. But those are the type of things that have happened before. But I'd like to say that you can look at these numbers and you can tell which buildings are getting the extra scoops because they're the ones that have the lowest class sizes because that's where they're investing it. And so, in addition to that, the intervention work is the second highest investment that we see with the compensatory dollars is Myers Wilkins, for example, and we can share those non-certified and supplementary staff members. They have five reading interventionists, and they're using all three sources of funding to get those. They're using OBE money, they're using title money, and they're using compensatory money because that's of value to them. Myers Wilkins went from a Dean model to an MHP model, a mental health practitioner model. So, they were able to get two mental health practitioners to help and support students rather than having a Dean model. So they're using their compensatory dollars to put those extra support folks into their buildings. So, when we think about the building and we think about classroom teacher, a lot of that extra scoop money is coming in the form of intervention or social workers or other pieces. So we can talk about those related services model pieces. But that's a great question because.
Well, that's a great answer.
Well, I think that people are thinking there's this extra carton of ice cream that they get to scoop later, but it's really already embedded in the budget.
Okay. You had mentioned site-based budgets, and so is that something that we're going to actually see kind of a different site budgets as part of our understanding of?
So we, we don't have site-based budgets.
Well, you used that term, so you just did, you did. So I just wanted to kind of go back to it.
We have site-based allocations of certain revenues like compensatory that have an allocation system, but we don't have a site-based budgeting process. Sorry, thank you for the clarification. Yep.
Okay.
So our staffing, this does not include buildings interventionists?
It does not include interventionists. These are traditional classroom teachers. It also does not include special education. So, keep in mind, when you think about a building, and you think about, every student is assigned a classroom unless they're one hundred percent in a special education classroom, which we rarely have. So, many times throughout the day, when students are either going to a resource room or they're getting a pull-out or a push-in, that classroom doesn't technically have all of these students being served at every period of time because those students might be being pulled out of their classroom to get related services someplace else. So I think it's important to note that sometimes in our head, kids get counted twice because we're showing a full-pledged enrollment here, but then many of those students are getting additional services during the day with a different teacher.
I really like this discussion, and not that, I'd actually, would be interested just so I could better understand how uniquely different each of our buildings are in terms of staffing. You know, like you just said, one building has chose the interventionist model versus the Dean model. I'd like to better understand that, so.
Absolutely. And that may be something, I'm not sure we'll be able to get to all that before we get to the budget, but I'd love to be able to entertain, and I think at one period of time since I've been here, we've talked about bringing principals in to school board meetings and maybe having them kind of have them introduce their buildings to you because they could probably do it better than.
And we did have that at one point where the CI, the continuous improvement team and the principal came and presented, and I think we all learned a lot about the uniqueness of all of our buildings.
Absolutely. And I wholeheartedly agree that having those understandings maybe helped because I think that also helps better understand the leadership vision of those buildings because, like we had mentioned earlier, I had a great conversation with an elementary principal who was just super excited about MTSS. And not that they all are, but it just happened to be this person who I was talking to. And she's really formulating her building based on those MTSS core models and trying to make sure that she's using data, using, you know, ways in which, and I think that I couldn't do it justice, but, you know, if you had the opportunity to hear how she's maybe prioritizing a staffing model versus a building that maybe doesn't have those similar needs, where a building that maybe is academically has a lot of things they need to focus on versus a different building that has behavioral things that they need to focus on, they may not need the same things, and so that's how they're working towards trying to find those fits. So, I would love the opportunity to maybe work at a future even committee of the whole meeting where we can bring in folks. I think that's a wonderful idea. They're amazing.
I'll address Assistant Superintendent Bott. I mean, it's probably pretty safe to say that every building uses interventionist. that every building uses interventionist at some level, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. And, and, but then obviously some of our buildings have a high, a much higher need, more, more interventionist.
They have a higher need and they may have the resources to actually support them.
And were, were, were we able to hire as many interventionists as buildings wanted and had money for? Did we find people to fill those positions?
I, I wanna say. Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say that, you know, the, the resources we have to meet the, the needs never match. I mean, it would be great to have, as far as like the number of interventionists that people wanted. Uh, you know, I think that there are uh, vast needs within each individual building. And unfortunately, we have a finite budget. But we were able to hire, for the most part, we were able to hire this past year for the positions we had posted. There were a couple of situations where, for example, there was a uh, a counselor position at Ordine where they sought to, to fill with a counselor for, for quite some time. And after multiple months and multiple, like multiple opportunities for trying to hire, they ended up going with the dean of students rather than a counselor. Not because we wanted to go from a dean perspective, but just because we were not able to hire for that uh, counselor position. So I think it's a, it's a combination of factors. Um, but we certainly do our best to try and match the needs based on the resources. Sorry, Miss Bond.
No problem.
Um, if you guys wouldn't mind, I'd love to transition to this sheet that says ESER because I think that that's a great question related to interventionists and how the district intentionally invested um, our ESER dollars into providing additional um, interventionists and other pieces. Um, does everybody have, did I give everybody the sheet that says ESER on the top? Excellent. And now, I, I told Simone, I wore the wrong glasses today so I may have to take off my glasses and do this because um, I, I can't read as close. And for whatever reason, this looks really tiny and maybe it's just my eyeballs, but.
It, it's tiny.
Okay.
It's tiny. And I, I have very good glasses on.
I didn't, I didn't mean for it to be tiny. So what I wanted to share, so if you were to put your hand on the last four columns, actually the last three columns, this is what you have seen a couple of different times in our, um, I think I did this at a committee of the whole meeting back in the fall and then at business services meetings. And then this was part of our budget that the board approved back in June of 2021. So these were uh, the line item amounts that um, we had pledged um, in relation to how we were gonna spend ESER money in fiscal year 2022. I've now added three columns at the end to talk about how we're moving and transitioning into fiscal year 23 so that we can kind of walk through these pieces. Um, so again, um, we, if you, if you look at the bottom of the first numbered column that says budget amount, uh, we had put in the budget approximately fourteen point one million dollars of ESER, potential ESER spending in fiscal year 2022. You can see the categories that we chose, which started up with administration or funds set aside for some strategic planning and some contractual work. Um, we had talked about, um, when we did the upgrade um, to a human resources director, we used some ESER funds to be able to fund that position where uh, before it was in a different uh, class. Um, Skyward, our transition, that's our software that we had, and we needed to invest in some devices and online time card systems, um, devices in our buildings. Um, we had support for recruitment for Skyward and frontline conversions and some other business services. Um, so we've been um, having to utilize some funds to get ourselves trained and upgraded with some of our new systems and approaches. Here come some of the big-ticket numbers. We have the nine hundred thousand dollars for interventionists. So um, those are temporary elementary interventionists. Um, we had budgeted five hundred and forty thousand dollars for um, temporary secondary FTE. So these were um, to help um, some of our um, secondary buildings where we had some sectioning issues. Um, I think if you recall, um, Danette Sebo shared with us that at any one class period, she would have between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty kids in study halls because we didn't have enough teachers to teach courses so that kids could get out of a study hall and be in a classroom. And so um, part of our process in 2022 was to provide uh, East with some more FTE so she could create more sections. And so that was part of those dollars. In addition to that, we had um, temporary floating subs uh, with some of our issues, especially mid-year. Um, and I know that um, our superintendent and assistant superintendent spent days in building supporting um, and substituting. Uh, we, we had a little bit of a delayed jumpstart on some of those positions, but we did um, uh, hire some uh, temporary floating subs. So we didn't um, expend so far all of that into this year, but we still have some incurred uh, dollars. We did also invest in middle school interventionists. Um, so we were helping that model. Uh, we did put a hundred thousand dollars to help support secondary MTSS strategies. Uh, we did put quite a bit of money, one point five million, in a set aside for professional development investment that would be managed by Anthony and his TLE department. Uh, we did put in uh, one point nine nine million dollars, which includes devices, staff and infrastructure for um, our, our digital computers um, and staffing to go along with that. Um, we also um, put aside four hundred thousand dollars for desktop replacements. This was in some of our business labs and in teacher classrooms. So we've upgraded uh, many of those uh, devices. Um, we also um, did us a million dollars worth of smart boards. Uh, those, if you haven't heard, I think have all been um, installed now. Um, they were doing them in the afternoons and on weekends. We had a team that came up from, actually the, the installers came from, I think one came from Florida and one came from somewhere. Um, very technical work, so we needed to bring in people. And Bart Smith managed uh, that entire uh, process. So we're very excited about that. Um, leadership TOSA's or deans of students, that was what um, a one-year allocation. Um, we did um, have a little bit, as Superintendent Magus said, um, uh, we had some that were not hired right away. Um, we couldn't fill a couple of positions. Um, some people took the position and then took a different position and then it left it open and we weren't able to find. And then I believe in one or two cases, um, buildings decided to do something different rather than having a leadership TOSA, which is why it's not showing as a full, full expended. Um, we did um, in our new creation and our new organization chart, um, one of the directors of instruction is being paid out of ESER funds. So we have that um, this year and going into next year. We did add uh, secondary counselors and an additional fifty thousand dollars for a sources of strength allocation, a cost. That was a one-year. And then we're rolling over four hundred thousand dollars um, into 2023 as a state year um, to support the secondary counselors. And that was Superintendent Magus's example where um, Ordine for this school year ended up hiring a dean of students. But I, I would have to ask Teresa, I'm not sure if that's gonna get reposted as a counselor again first to attempt to try to get a counselor and then carry it over. My understanding is the person in the position of the dean is leaving the district. So they, they will most likely repost it as a counselor. Yeah. Social emotional supports. Uh, we had budgeted two hundred thousand dollars here to help um, with some social emotional work being led by Callie DeBrent. She was trying to get a Project Aware grant. We weren't gonna find out if she was successful until November. So we budgeted uh, two hundred thousand dollars. We only needed twenty thousand dollars because she was successful in getting the Project Aware grant. So we're getting approximately one point eight million dollars, I think, over five years uh, for that program. So uh, very excited. So that's gonna be some dollars that are, you're gonna see repurposed as we move forward because we didn't need all those dollars. Uh, we did have, uh, we did purchase uh, a social emotional curriculum called Second Step. Um, we also had some additional support for transportation, food service and site monitors. Um, we've actually overspent on that, uh, so we're gonna uh, work through that. Um, the district attendant support, um, we actually did uh, provide some support there. Um, I'll have to fix that because I think that's actually gonna get fully expended now. Uh, we did provide clerical for our uh, district COVID coordinator um, with all the work that was being done and the distribution of test kits, the distribution of masks, um, having to do contact tracing while we were in the process of requirement to do that. Um, that person has been, from what I understand, uh, pretty, pretty amazing. So that's been a, a great investment uh, for that uh, department. Uh, and then we had some building improvement uh, money and you'll see that the majority of that is being carried over. We're working with Dave Spooner and that team to do some site and building improvements. Uh, then you're gonna see a couple of things here. Uh, we did, uh, before I get to the yellow or the, yeah, yellow ones, the support at Denfeld, after the school year started, we recognized that we needed to provide some additional support. And I remember, remember Lowell saying, oh, are these gonna be permanent or are these just gonna be temporary? Um, and so we had allocated more money to Denfeld. They were delayed in being able to find some of the people to um, fill those positions. But they did, they were able to hire a supervisory para. They finally got an additional dean of students. So I think part of the challenge there was that person couldn't leave their other building until that position got filled and they couldn't fill that position. So there was a little bit of a delay, but um, they're working towards getting some of those extra supports. And you'll see moving forward into 2023, the district is committing to make sure that Denfeld has those similar supports going into 2023 and being able to post for those positions again.
But you don't carry that over. Is there a reason why that?
It's up, I'm sorry, it's embedded up in a different uh, category for 2023. So this was kind of a, after the school year started, we added that one. And I'll show you where that uh, pops up a little bit later. Um, we did have a lot of talk and discussion about um, alternative for suspension programs. And um, we uh, will be moving forward with some work. Um, and uh, Tom Tuscan at Denfeld will be leading that work. And so you're gonna see a three hundred thousand dollar budget in 2023 um, in yellow. But that's actually coming out of the staff development allocation. In order for us to do that, we didn't have it planned or had extra. And Assistant Superintendent Bonds felt that with his strategic planning, he'd be able to afford that out of that budget. So that's kind of a transfer from one to another. And then if members um, can remember that part of some of our bargaining unit um, negotiation and contract settlements, uh, we were paying a COVID stipend. So we had budgeted, uh, I believe Teresa shared with me that the teachers and the paras are getting it on this paycheck. Um, and then we have the allocation for the unsettled contracts, a set aside for next year. Um, if there's those um, settlements and other um, contracts as well. So that will equate to just shy of one point two million dollars throughout the district to uh, pay those additional stipends. And then also as part of the um, uh, teachers' contract, there was an additional professional development day that would, oh, yep.
Just a little confused with what you just said there. So why would, why would the unsettled contracts or the, the back pay essentially, right?
Nope, this is just for that six hundred dollar stipend.
Right, that part I get.
Yep.
So, but you referenced something else.
Nope. If I did, I didn't mean to.
That, that would, that just, I was questioning why would that come out of ESER? So the, the back pay for teachers with a, with a settled contract, doesn't come out of ESER?
None of that's coming out of ESER. We just put, we just put a whole pocket of money in case other contracts also have a six hundred dollar stipend.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry. Yep.
Nope, that's clear. Got it.
Um, and then um, that additional professional development day, we um, estimated at a higher daily rate of pay that was agreed upon by the teachers' union. And we're estimating that to be about four hundred and five thousand for them to add an extra day. Um, and that will be happening in fiscal year 23 in August.
So.
Yeah. So adding those in, those were line items that happened after the initial discussions of ESER. So you'll see those as they're moving forward. Um, and then you'll see um, at the bottom, um, the fund balance investment. That's just to help all of the operational uh, budgeted line items stay intact. So if you remember, uh, in this current year that we're in right now, we've lost one point four million dollars of compensatory revenue and we're projecting an additional three hundred thousand dollar loss going into next year. So ESER is really in a sense paying, is filling that bucket because we've not asked any building to reduce any expenditures related to compensatory uh, because we're trying to keep things intact. And so additionally, um, with teacher contract settlements and all of the other bargaining unit settlements, those costs are going up and without having extra students and extra money to pay for that, ESER is also helping backfill some of those um, costs as well. So, you know, just kind of thinking of it in terms of the big-ticket areas where we've lost some of our revenues or not seeing as much coming in, um, that's what that ESER backfill is gonna do for us. Um, so I'm gonna kind of go through those last three columns now so you can kind of get a better sense of what's carrying over. So of the top row, uh, so far to date, and I think there's actually more that's been expended there, uh, but I think it might be sitting in a different budget. We are carrying over approximately a hundred and fifty-two thousand as of today, but that number may change um, as we get to the end of the year and we look at what's being expended. And then there'll be an additional hundred thousand. That's to cover the cost of the strategic planning work. Um, and then potentially other initiatives by the superintendent administration or the school board in relation to um, other, other supports that we might need for strategic planning.
Before you go down that next column, could you just remind us, are we still getting ESER money into next year and into 2025?
So all of the ESER funds have to be expended by September thirtieth, 2024. So we are in ESER two. We're just, we're gonna be spending all of ESER two by June thirtieth. So it had an expiration date of 2023, but we're outpacing that by a year. So we have spent down those dollars. So we'll be into that last bucket. Um, and um, it has a 2024 expiration date, but when I get to the little bottom here summary, um, we will have expended all of our dollars except for around just shy of two million dollars by the end of 2023. So we will not have a large dollar amount left for the fiscal year 23, 24 school year. And that has been intentional, that we wanted to front-load to make sure that we would meet the needs of the unfinished learning needs of our students. Um, trying to make sure we can keep our staffing um, in, in alignment. We have to take a break to get to.
Yeah.
I'll get you some. Thank you. Thank you so much. So does that, does that help everyone? So, oh, I'm just gonna take a one second here. Um, when you look at the, the first, the, the third to the, the right column that says FY22 budget amount rolling over. So some of these that had um, allocations that weren't fully spent, um, we're pulling and rolling over a little bit of dollars for um, the strategic planning. We're rolling over some dollars for that Skyward. Um, we just didn't order all the time clocks. Some of them are not coming in until July and August, so we're paying for some of those in July and August. And then that's for additional training. Um, and Anthony just stepped out, but um, we have some expenditures in the professional development piece. But the reason that we're only carrying over a million is that three hundred thousand that's going for alternatives for suspension, that's in the middle column that's yellow. Um, he's transferring that out of that PD to pay that. So that's why he's only carrying over a million dollars into um, 2023 for professional development, additional professional development. That one hundred thousand will become approximately two hundred thousand because he's had additional expenditures um, that aren't showing up yet on this report. So he'll have spent about two hundred thousand in his current fiscal year. He'll have a carryover of a million and then he's transferring three hundred thousand for the alternative for suspension program. So that's the carryover. And then additionally with the building improvements for timing and other issues related to um, getting things ordered, uh, the building improvements is, thank you so much, is moving to 2023 as well. Any questions on the carrier rollover pieces?
I'll, I'll just wanna ask a quick question.
Sure.
So, I mean, what I see here is that we're looking at almost all of our emotional supports and our mental health needs being addressed with the, the grant, the one point eight million dollar Project Work Grant. Is that correct?
Um, I wouldn't say.
I mean, it seems like a, a good chunk of it is. And, and, and I know, I know that's one of the bigger challenges that all districts are having right now is there's not enough people out there to fill the, the need in these positions.
Yeah.
Is, does the grant carry into the future?
Five years.
Five years.
So that's a really good thing.
It is a really good thing.
So it is time to try to.
Yes. Yes. And um, Callie DeBrent has done an amazing job of budgeting and planning. She's worked with Simone and myself. Um, we actually had to create a joint powers agreement with MDE. This is a big-ticket grant. Um, we had to make a lot of promises that we would spend this money in a really good way. And then part of it is they're, they're having to send data back to show how this grant is gonna make a difference. And so that was the other part of the joint powers is that we had to agree to share data, share results and, and show how that's gonna help other school districts to maybe create an initiative that more districts can get this. Um, Singlis County Schools up on the range, um, they got the first round of a Project Aware grant. So they were. So they were one of the few, I believe only five districts got it this time around and we were one of them. And so it was a really good thing, yeah. The new allocation year two of two, if you remember our budgeting conversations back in June, we had a, a list of some items that we wanted to commit to for two years because many of them are going to be ongoing costs that after ESER, we're going to have to have some important conversations on how to fix those. But we did want to make sure we set aside some additional dollars for strategic planning and other initiatives by administration of the board. Um, we do have that HR, um, director investment for another year. Uh, we wanted to make sure the Skyward, um, devices and other things we needed to finalize our transfer of our new, um, software HR finance system, and that will be finalized. Uh, we did have some additional supports coming into, um, uh, help for recruitment and other Skyward conversions that we wanted to put some money aside, uh, for that. Um, if you go down a little ways, you're going to see those blended learning supports, which includes devices, staff and infrastructure. So we're, I, I, I think you all are, are aware that we have what we're calling digital innovation specialists. Um, these are new folks that are in most of our buildings. Currently we have nine, um, and so some are shared between some of our buildings, but they're housed in several of our buildings. And they're providing support, not just for devices, but helping teachers be able to utilize, um, even their smart boards and other initiatives in their classrooms, but then also the support. There'll also be the people who are doing the device collection, the device inventory to make sure that we're managing this giant investment we made with new devices and new infrastructure.
What are they called again?
Digital Innovation Specialists.
Okay.
They are year-round positions, so they will be here all summer long and they'll be doing a lot of the work to prep our devices, to clean them, to make sure that they're all ready to go. And then they'll be the part of the distribution team. Um, and then they'll also be going into the classrooms and making sure that the classroom devices that are in our buildings are, um, analyzed and assessed to make sure that we're moving forward. We did do the million dollar investment of smart boards, but they're only in grades K2. So part of what we're doing is doing an assessment of all of the other, uh, classroom devices, including smart boards and our rest of our grade levels to make sure that we can at least say, here's what we know we need, even though we may not have enough money. We'd need another $4 million to replace all of the smart boards in the district.
What department do these digital people fall under?
Yeah, so they fall under actually two departments. One, they are falling under, uh, curriculum and blended learning. So they're working, uh, under, uh, the support of the TLE team and the directors of elementary and secondary education. And then when they go off contract, they'll be working with Bart Smith in the summertime, um, to do the device collection, the, the device, uh, improvements and making sure that they get ready for the redeployment of devices in September.
So we collect all the devices in the spring and reallocate them in the fall?
We do.
The student does not keep the same device for the three or four years they're in our buildings?
They don't. Um, right now we are going through, we have so, one of the things that we haven't been able to quite figure out, and Bart and I are trying to work on this, is that we have a lot of damaged devices on a regular basis. And we were hoping to find a local repair, uh, contractor who would be willing to do that work. And we have been unsuccessful. And if you send them off, it costs as much money to go send them for repair than it does to buy another device. So we're really trying to figure out a way to, um, manage that. Um, but for those students who may be, um, taking summer school, um, we're going to be working with, uh, our blended learning coordinators, elementary and secondary. They may retain theirs, but then we just need to do a, a software check on them. So we'll be working with, um, our summer school folks to figure out who's being enrolled in those summer school programs and then they'll retain their devices, uh, for the summer. Other questions?
I, I, I'm wondering, I, I kind of hear where you're coming from here too, because I'm wondering if there would, they might last longer if they, if they have, they felt some ownership to that device and I'm going to use this next year and I'm going to use it the year after that. I mean, I don't know if that's been looked at, if there's any research out there that supports that.
I know the TLE team, the blended learning team and the technology team have all, like, been spending a lot of time on this. This is their current recommendation, I think because of the first year of deployment. We're trying to figure out what works and what doesn't work. Last year we obviously had some struggles in trying to retain devices and figure out how we're going to do those. Um, but I think our, our eventual intention is to try to create a more sustainable model.
Um, so just, I want to back up to the blended learning initiative too, because, I mean, it's, it's your, are, are we, we put it on hold this year and we also hired these people too, to help do these things. Um, so hopefully they're working hard to make sure. Are, I guess the question is, are we going to start with that from the get-go next fall? Are we going to have staff development and?
The staff development, um, they will be in a position to fulfill the roles that they were really hired for. Or more of the role that they were hired for. But right now, uh, thankfully we had those individuals because there's a lot of need, uh, in the buildings regarding, again, the deployment of devices, to clean up the devices, supporting teachers in the classroom. So, you know, you can best believe that, that those individuals were needed and they also supported, uh, abilities in a variety of ways as well, within classrooms and so forth. So the goal right now is to do a reset on prioritizing that work actually.
And, and have we done any staff development? So they're understanding what's going on with the launch of blended learning next fall and will be ready for it?
I miss tabs.
Have, have we had staff development already so that our, our staff will be ready to, that they understand what blended learning is and they're going to be ready to get?
Our staff?
Yes.
Oh, they'll, we've also received some training at the very beginning of the year. That's what the August 29th date is for as well. So they'll be training, there's some training this current, this summer, as well as we'll have an opportunity on that Monday, August 29th, to do some additional training and supporting teachers. So our teachers should be in a, in a much better place to, um, you know, support some of the work that we were hoping to accomplish this year around blended learning application. All that means, it sounds like a fancy word, but we're just trying to, um, improve instructional, um, you know, improve instructional, instruction by implementing or using or leveraging technology in meaningful ways. So it's just integrate your technology in a more meaningful way in a classroom. So they'll be receiving some support to do that a lot there.
Is, is this something that?
Superintendent, I know you, you, you deem and then?
Yep.
Can I just finish this question, it's just some thoughts in my head. Is this something that is focused more at elementary grade levels? Or is it, is it also apply secondary across all subject areas? Or, or, I mean, are there, there must be subject areas that blended learning isn't, are going to be a big part of? Is that right?
It's a K-12 initiative.
It's a K-12.
But, but a higher, higher focus for the, um, third grade through 12th grade, uh, levels because of the, the device allocation. And really our pause on deeper professional learning for staff was in response to the concern that we were hearing from staff and from, from building principals that, that people were feeling very overwhelmed, uh, during the second year of the pandemic. So it was really an intentional pause, not because we wanted to pause, uh, but because we had to pause based on the current reality. And then I would also say that there, there are different ways of thinking about professional development. A lot of times people think about professional development as like a one-day training or multiple-day training where you've got a few hours here and a few hours there. But really, uh, the research shows that the most effective professional learning is really job embedded professional learning. So it's, it's having those support people being able to work with the professionals so that they're able to give that additional support as they move along. Thanks.
Thank you.
These are great questions and I'm really grateful for the dialogue and, um, like the nature is ever saying. Looking at that second column again, I just want to clarify that additionally, um, we are looking at the director of instruction for that second year. Uh, we do have some money set aside for additional pupil support. And then those were those three yellowed, um, that we already talked about, that we are investing in, um, alternative for suspension. We're investing potentially in those additional COVID stipends for those contracts that have been settled, but we haven't yet dispersed those funds. And then the agreed-upon additional professional development day. And then as you saw in our budget conversation with the board in April, um, we are setting aside upwards to $4 million to help, again, maintain our general operating budget uh, for all those things, including the loss of compensatory, including the loss of general education revenue because of the loss of students and being able to try to maintain our current staffing and programs as we had basically pre-pandemic. So, yep.
Yeah, just a quick question, the additional professional development day on August 29th. Is that just our teaching staff or does that include our paras, our council, I mean, everybody?
No, this is, this was an agreed-upon in the DPA or, uh, DFT contract. So this is a one-day, um, accelerated payment for an additional one staff development day.
So just for the, uh, staff?
I will say we did negotiate additional para professional support in their para contract. That is not currently ESER funded, but was able to be managed within that department.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that we did include the paras.
They may decide, so the schedule needs to be decided upon before the end of the school year. And they may decide to use that day, um, as a, as a day for training, but it's not established yet.
Go ahead, and that's something they have, they have already requested from us. So Heather Harvick, who is our coordinator for professional development, she's already been in contact with them. Uh, right now there is a desire for them to also, uh, receive some professional development on that day as well. Since the, since our teachers will be here, it will be a good day for them to, uh, be here as well. So that is right now, um, the potential plan.
Great, thank you.
Member Oswald? The alternative suspension program allocation, is that, um, directly tied to the, the Department of Human Rights requirements at all? Or is this?
Um, it, it is not. Um, it is a, it is a opportunity for us to discover what that could look like. Um, we know that there's a desire to look at that more holistically and sustainably in the district. Uh, for now, we'll be working with Tom Tuscan and I think he's going to develop something at Denfeld to look at what that support model could look like. As you know, there is an alternative for suspension program at Lincoln Park right now. So we're actually looking at how does that roll into and how will that look? And then working with, maybe looking at how that will look sustainably. So this is more like a pilot, uh, to see what that looks like. And Principal Tuscan has shared his desire to, um, work with his CIT and see how they could pull something together. So that'll be coordinated with the teaching and learning team. Yep.
Just one, one last question, the $4 million to maintain what we have now, is there a way you can highlight that in this list? Because I know we have heard over the last so many months, especially with our negotiations and our contract, that this list in front of us now, which I understand completely and know what, what we're doing with it, but the, but the messaging sometimes is that we have spent a lot of ESER money on non-student support. That the ESER money is supposed to be going towards, you know, um, academic opportunity. And, and I, I think that, um, I, I would like to be more transparent with our community that says, well, well, no, there, well, one, a lot of, a lot of our ESER funding, um, is going to improve that opportunity. Just that sometimes our community doesn't always know that the, um, maybe the social emotional curriculum or the building improvements, health, safety and all of that. But I, I think it would be a, a, a good thing to put that on our list so that when, when there's some direction that says, oh, we're spending a lot of money on non, non-teachers or non, you know, or, or the reverse and say we're, we're spending a lot more on administration.
You know, thank you for that. And there is a great, there's a great chart in the making here that can give that visual. And, um, if you remember, there's a, this document was in a portrait form and at the very bottom there was kind of a donut graph that showed what was, what we would consider educational versus noneducational. And if, and that's why I did put the budget department on here. So anything that is elementary, secondary, instruction, um, instructional support, uh, pupil support, all of those categories relate to students. And that's why we did that specifically so that people could see that if you were to look at all the things that say either instructional or pupil, the majority of our ESER funds have been spent on those services. There's actually very little that's administrative. Um, and there's very little that, um, is, and again, I want to like circle all the way back to the meeting in that the original ten, intention of these dollars were actually for, uh, personal protection, the PPE. The reason we got a lot of this money and the original expenditures we had in fiscal years 20 and 21, that's where we bought all the masks and all the cleaning things and all the supplies and all those things. But part of what we need to potentially be prepared for is that if there is another round or, um, another variant of COVID, we may be going right back into looking and, and we're going to have to be really thoughtful about that because a lot of districts see this as just free money. There's a lot of documentation and work that we have to do as a school district. We have to submit a budget, we have to get approval. We've had things that they've said no to. They, we've brought in, you know, hey, can we do this? And they've said, no, that doesn't qualify. So, um, there is going to be a lot of scrutiny over this money. These are federal awarded dollars that are being managed by the state of Minnesota. And we have to get reimbursed. We, we are not holding on to a dime of this money. We have to spend it upfront, we have to submit it to the department and then they give us, uh, draws or, or reimbursements later. So, um, this is a highly oversight, uh, set of dollars, even though it seems like a lot and, and it, this is in alignment with what those, uh, priorities of the state are as well.
Just one more question, are we not investing in permanent building substitutes in '23?
We are not. Um, and then the last column was understanding that we hadn't spent all of the projected dollars that we thought we were going to initially spend, partly some are being carried over, but partly some of the one-time things, um, that we didn't fully spend. Um, our administrative team and then working with our all administrative team, giving them the re, oh, yep.
Sorry, that was over here.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up before.
I know. Um, I, I just wanted to ask, um, the, the 400 million, or the 400 million, $4 million?
Yes.
Oh, approximately how, if we could translate that into how many staff positions that's actually saving, I think that might be a useful number to, um, to help visualize it. Because I mean, I, you know, my generic head, I'm like, you know, 40 staff, but you know, I know it's different. And I don't know if it's, if it's $4 million exactly, or if that's like your ballpark figure.
It's a, it's a ballpark right now. Um, so it could be, it could be replacing any number of things that we would have otherwise cut. So I don't know that I can give you what we're using it for, but I can tell you that the majority of it is paid for compensatory. Um, we, we lost between last year and this year, we're losing 1.7 million dollars of compensatory revenue and we've cut none of those things. So at a minimum, we could say that that's backfilling all of those extra scoops that if we would have had to go back to our buildings and say, all right, all of you, everybody has to give back 1.7 million dollars of things you had in your buildings. We didn't want to do that. So that's probably a way, I could give some examples of what is being utilized, of what we would consider a traditional compensatory allocation, but I'm not sure I could give, you know, but to your example, um, you know, it could be 40 teachers.
Well, I, I just, I think, um, the more concrete we can make that, the more teachers will hear it perhaps. Um, you know, because I, I want to tell them that, you know, we're giving you, we're providing $4 million to, to make sure every one of you are still here. Um, but, but yet, how are we, how are we doing that may not be that way. And I, I guess, um, that only adds to their narrative of, of, um, we're not spending ESER money on them. And I, I think we are and I think this list proves it. So that's a huge chunk of this list that, that doesn't have the description or a budget department necessarily associated with it.
I appreciate that and I think we'll try to work as a team and as an administrative team to maybe give some more concrete examples. I think, I think an exercise that would be difficult but appropriate would be if we had to go back to our building leaders, our program leaders and say, if for some reason tomorrow the MDE said, I'm sorry, ESER went away early, we didn't actually get the federal allocations, what are you going to cut? That would be what they're paying for. So I guess in reality it would be if we didn't have these funds, what would our district leaders say, we're going to have $4 million less of next year? Because that's our, that's our true reality. So I appreciate that and I'll, I'll, we'll noodle through that as a team and, and maybe come up with examples. But really it is, it is paying for the loss of both the general education revenue and the compensatory revenue that we've lost because of our people loss. So, but we'll, we'll think of that. Appreciate that.
It's just an idea.
No, it's, it's, it's great and I appreciate maybe moving that up to the top versus at the bottom because that is, that is, if, if you think about over the next two years, you know, uh, a third of the money is just helping us maintain the programs and services we have. So, yeah. Um, the third last column that says new allocation from. The third last column that says new allocation from unspent funds. Um, back in, was it in March or, I'm sorry, I'm losing my train of mind. Did we do this all admin in the beginning of April?
I think it's March.
I have to tell you.
I think it was March.
I think, thank you. So we had done kind of a, just to pass the mid-year check of the things that we had budgeted versus the things that we thought we may or may not be filling. You know, there are some things that just didn't get hired. We knew there were positions that weren't getting filled. And we felt that at that time, we might have an estimated 1.8 million dollars that we could repurpose, that we could basically rehopper and put back out as another expenditure into fiscal year 23. We, as a administrative team, came up with three basic priorities that we wanted to make sure that we felt comfortable and confident in. And those were unfinished learning, to make sure that we were focused on unfinished learning, social emotional.
So social emotional learning and safety.
And safety. So those three priorities led our discussions of a general recommendation. We spent a day with our administrative leaders and had them do an exercise. If we said, if we had 1.8 million dollars to give, what would be your priority to help us support? And we gave them the list of the, kind of the one-year funding sources that were going away and give us a priority. So we actually did an exercise with all of our leaders. They provided feedback. We took that back and actually showed it to them and kind of showed the, the priority list that we received. And from there, what we heard more than anything else was intervention. They wanted to continue to see interventions for one more year. So we have invested $900,000, again, a reinvestment of the carryover of the additional interventionists, the temporary elementary. We also put in that $300,000, so this was the Denfeld. So 100,000 is going to East. They originally had 200,000 this year. They're getting an additional, basically one FTE to get additional sections to help with their sectioning. And Denfeld will be getting 200,000, which will help cover that additional dean of students for one more year and then to supervisory paras for one more year. So they, that 300,000 is a, a combination of East and Denfeld at the secondary level. We also committed to the middle school interventionists for one more year. So they also received, we carried over basically 1.6 FTE, partially going to our dean, partially going to Lincoln Park. Keeping in mind that Lincoln Park had a very robust intervention program already, so they didn't need as much, or dean was getting more just based on enrollment, they had more students. And then we also put 400,000 to the continuation of additional secondary counselors. This was a distribution between three of the four. Lincoln Park already has three counselors. So they said, I don't need any more counselors. They have a very structured model of both deans of students and counselors. So East got 1.5 FTE, Denfeld got 1.5, and or dean got 1.0. So that's how we did the extra counselor allocations. Then we just put in an additional 40,000 of discretionary social emotional support. So that would be working with the TLE team and under Assistant Superintendent Bonds. If he saw a need for something, or maybe the climate and culture team has something, he'd be working to distribute that additional 40,000 for as needed. Because I think we wanted to wait till the school year started and we didn't, you know, we wanted to have some money that there would be some preparation. So this, this was a repurposing of unspent money utilizing a priority system of unfinished learning, blended learning and safety. And we went back to all of our district leaders. All of them were able to participate in the feedback. And of that feedback, these were the priorities that were chosen. Superintendent?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Mr. Bonds, you might be able to, to talk about this a little bit more. But then if there were any, if there were any requests to deviate from what was recommended, your team had worked on a pretty specific data set. So that there was kind of a need to, to show that, that the data supported the decision to deviate from that choice, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So with the intervention, I just wanted to share and Assistant Superintendent Bonds, part of the 900,000, they did want to focus on a little bit of behavioral or social emotional. So working on the data sets that they had, some were identified to help support in that social emotional area. But the principals could look and say, if I already had building supports, maybe I'd want to keep it educational. Or if they already had the educational intervention, they may want to put more towards social emotional. And that's when they worked with Assistant Superintendent Bonds and his team. And it was revenue neutral or it was FTE neutral, but they may have moved from one category to another based on looking at the other component pieces that they already had in their building and knowing that the Project Aware grant was providing some additional supports in some areas for this coming school year as well. So wanting to make sure at the bottom, so that everybody understands, there's a little box that has a giant number in it. And it doesn't have a lot of detail yet, but we'll be looking forward to sharing a little bit more information with you before the end of the school year. Is that part of the ESR three dollars that we received, there was a 20% allocation requirement that four million dollars needed to be set aside for what they said outside of the school year and outside of the school day. There was an option, or there is an option, for districts to embed some of those dollars within the school day. But at the time of the application, it was shared with us that you had to create a theory of lot, theory of change, and then a logic model, which is a very, I read through it and I passed it right off to Assistant Superintendent Bonds and their team. A lot of investment and a lot of work in order to spend it during the school day. It sounds like now the district is exploring, the MDE just recently sent out information that districts can amend this portion of the application to use it for during the school day. And our teams will be looking at a potential investment there. So this is really for advanced summer school time or after-school programming time. And Assistant Superintendent Bonds and his TLE and summer school teams will be working together to distribute that a little bit more. We have until September 30th, 2024. So we have this year's summer school, next year's summer school, and actually the third subsequent year's summer school in addition to if we decide to embed anything into the school day. So it seems like a lot of money, but it can actually go pretty quickly depending on what model they decide to work on. So that team is working very actively to determine that. We do have some summer school plans for this year, but I think we may see some more robust ideas going into the subsequent summers and potentially into the school year. So, but I just wanted you to be aware, that's separate. That was required for us to set aside. In our finance world, we call that ESR 161 money. So that has a specific rule and set aside. So Simone and her team will be handling the submission of information, the submission of documentation. If we decide to do an amendment to our application, that would run through our finance team to make sure that we can get that approved. We have a great working relationship with MDE. We've spent a lot of time, just today, we sent a couple emails, and they've been really great to work with. They've hired specific staff just to manage the federal funds. So they have some specific people that are just doing this work. In the beginning, it was a little frustrating because so many of them were new and they didn't know how to answer our questions, which is why nine months later, we're finally getting information saying, oh, now you can go in and edit. There was no option for us to edit the application up until two weeks ago, I think we got a memo. So we're looking forward to that team continuing to look at those options. And that can be done in coordination. If you remember, we are a targeted services district because we have an alternative learning center. We can do outside of the school year, you know, our Excel program. So we have some after-school programming and some summer school programming. That can be done in collaboration with. And we may be looking at how those funds either interact or how we delay one or the other to make sure we're maximizing the revenues from all the different sources. So we'll be working on that process. Any other questions on that four million? So of, of the ESR three, I just want to be clear, that's a set aside.
Yep. Not so much specific to this, but I, I believe at one of our last meetings, Assistant Superintendent, you said you're going to be doing an update on what our summer school programming is going to look like, right?
That's correct. At the, I will have that updated on our next call meeting.
Okay, okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure I heard that right. Okay, great, thank you.
Then if you go to the other wider box at the bottom, just as a reminder. So we're currently, the funds we have left to expend are ESR two, which expires September 30th, 2023, and ESR three, which expires 2024. We have received other, we've received ESR one and we've received CRF. And those have both all been expended in 2021 or prior. So we spent some right away at the beginning of the pandemic. And then we spent the majority of those funds in fiscal year 21. And those were mostly devices and PPE. That's what we spent those first kind of four million dollars of those. And then if you remember, we did receive that St. Louis County grant for a 725,000 that supported our tutoring program, that supported some additional PPE, that had supported some additional equipment purchases for safety in our transportation and in our school buildings. So this is only related to fiscal year 22 and going into 23. So when we think about the big ESR pot, we received about 32 to 34 million. But we're only talking about 28.4 plus the four million that is being set aside by Superintendent Bonds and the set aside for ESR three. So we expect that we'll be spending all of ESR two and we'll be moving into the ESR three money by June 30th because we have all the teacher payoffs and those people that are being paid out of ESR still expended. And then, so the estimated spending in 2022 is about 10.9 million. You can see that if you add up the last three columns, the 1.9 plus the 8.1 plus the 1.8, we expect to spend 11.8 million in fiscal year 23 coming up, starting July 1, utilizing the carryovers plus the other allocations that we've committed to, plus the 1.8 of repurposed ESR funds. And then between the money that we have left, which is ESR two and ESR three, between 22 and 23, we'll have approximately 1.96 million dollars of unencumbered or not yet budgeted ESR funds. So that's where we see ourselves at the end of FY 23. I know that was a lot, so I want to make sure everybody has a chance to absorb that and ask any questions you have about that.
I just want, I just want to add one thing. Again, we often have these conversations, we mentioned about additional counselors for East High School, Denfeld High School. I, I do know that our counselor at ALC has a very high caseload. And, and they could certainly use some additional support for the social emotional learning supports, whether that comes out of Project Aware or comes out of ESR. But they have, they have needs too. And I think often they're neglecting, or we don't, they're not part of the conversation. And that's something that needs to be looked at. The workload of the counselor down at ALC is, is, she's got a lot of students.
I, I believe there's been some requests and I think it's under consideration. And thank you for that. I think that's been as part of the overall looking at our budgets and how we can support that.
Well, in addition to what's recently happened, you know, I mean, so, so again, there's other safety concerns and or other things that need to be addressed.
And like Kathy said, Principal Gold, he has sheer desire to have some additional support at ALC.
Would it be fair to say it's just not going to come out of ESR, maybe? Is that why it went up here?
I think we're looking at all the different options of the different programming and different funding that's available. And I think we're just looking at kind of just the overview of, of how their systems are working. They've been putting a lot of investments into additional overloads. So we're going to be looking at, is there a way to avoid some of those overloads? And then utilize that, those funds for additional related supports.
I, I guess I certainly would support that. I, I just also wonder, and it's because I don't understand I'm asking this question, is, is that the students that are at ALC, that there's not overlapping, or not overlapping, that, that the support they might receiving, be receiving from the different high schools are, I don't know, if they?
No.
Well, I, I don't know, and so I'm asking, and so I just want to, you know.
The counselor at ALC has a very, very high caseload. And it gets, could certainly use efficient support, whether it's, whether it's coming out of ESR or coming out of other sources.
Just, I mean, give us a knockdown to revisit Professor Gold's request and we'll factor in. And I think Kathy have shared that as well. One of the things we're trying to do is, you know, as the year winds down, find out how much money we still have available that's unspent or, and there might be some additional things that could be allocated to sites, or we don't know that at this point in time. As Kathy shared, as it's, it's getting tighter and tighter in terms of the resources that we have remaining. So we have to be really strategic on how we let us use resources and replace them. And especially with only 1.9 million dollars left unencumbered, some really difficult decisions will need to be made. And as Kathy, I think he continues to try to share, all those positions and all those things that's listed here, if those are individuals or teachers or staff, those individuals, many of them will not have positions after that next year. So we're going to have to have some, some really tough conversations on how do we continue to support some of these needs in social emotional learning for our students? How do we continue to support safety? How do we continue to support the academic needs of our students once ESR goes away? So it's going to be some, some really tough conversations.
It's also my understanding that, that, that ALC AOE, and AOE, they don't need the ESR money. But ALC has not received any of ESR funds to this, to date. So that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Can I clarify that? They're the biggest loser of compensatory dollars. They're getting a half a million dollars of ESR funds to keep their program running because we'd be cutting over a half a million dollars out of their program because their program lost the most individually for compensatory. And I think to the point of, of all of our members, we should probably clarify which departments and programs and buildings lost, so that that's what's being covered. So it might not be individual additional scoops, but they're getting a half a million just to maintain their, their program and services right now.
Of compare?
Of, of what they would have lost in compensatory. It's being now covered as ESR funding because we would have had to cut those instead.
Other schools are getting that too.
But they were the highest. ALC lost the highest individual percentage, which was a half a million dollars. Of the 1.4 million, a half a million was theirs.
Okay.
So I think, I just want to make sure, does everybody feel okay about ESR? This was a big conversation. We wanted to make sure people understood. This was a lot of work to keep going forward. This will be part of our proposal going into our 2023 budget, knowing that these were, most of these were agreed upon, you know, a year ago, where we said we had our one-year commitments or two-year commitments, and then how would we keep moving forward? And again, you know, it would be, interestingly, if you went through every district who received funds, ESR funds, some got so little. Because remember, all ESR funds were based on your title, your, your federal title formulas. And so a lot of districts who didn't have a high free reduced lunch got very little. I used Stillwater as one of my examples, where we got 20 million, they got five. Same size district, same kind of building, same kind of everything, but their free reduced lunch demographic was different than ours and they got 75% less funding than we did, even though they may have had many of the same challenges and needs we had. So how districts were able to manage these dollars and how districts were able to strategize how they're using those dollars has varied all over the state. You probably are hearing right now that there are districts cutting their operational budgets in the tunes of millions of dollars. I happen to look at Rochester, I think they're proposing seven million dollars of cuts, even though they have a 23 million dollar shortfall right now. And they also received ESR dollars, but many used it for specific purposes. They didn't use it to backfill because they knew it was one-time money. And you've heard me say that a lot when we first got the money, is that if you use it for ongoing costs, there comes a time when there's the cliff. And so we know a lot of districts spent on technology, HVAC. And again, I want to just say kudos to the district. And again, I want to just say kudos to the district. Many districts spent millions of dollars on upgrading their H VAC. We didn't have to because we had great H VAC through the long-range facilities plan. Dave Spooner, we did upgrade a few of our filtering systems in the district in that first round of S R one. But we didn't have to do nearly the kind of upgrades to air quality that other districts had because we had done such a good job as a district in the past. So really, depending on the district's needs, these dollars were spent in literally hundreds of different ways. So want to make sure, any other questions on S R?
I I just want to thank Simone and you for for this because this does help.
I'm glad.
To follow this a lot better than we were able to follow in the past.
I know.
But I do, I do think at some point in time, you know, to share the bold question earlier, that sometimes even breaking out maybe some of these positions more clearly. So we see what's going to happen there. I mean, because to me, it also does look like that, you know, some of these blended learning specialists, you know, are we going to carry those over or are those positions going to handle?
So that's a huge question that we have in terms of blended learning is if, and if this is truly going to be a sustainable, long-term component of the district, we are going to have to find sustainable funding, which means we're going to have to have conversations about what we're currently doing and where are we going to find that two to three million dollars a year to help support staff, to support replacement devices? Everybody knows we didn't have a technology budget. We really did not have any funds as a school district related to that. And I know we've been having some good initial conversations, but I think part of strategic planning work and internal strategic planning work that the district is going to have to do and work with our board and community to say, what are our true financial priorities? What are the things we're going to focus on? Because we always know there's more need than money. So are there things we're going to change up in our system that are things that need to be prioritized ongoing costs? So that's going to be a, the minute we started spending money on devices, I said, who's going to come up with when it comes to twenty twenty-four? If we're going to keep moving on or if we don't have a sustainable funding source, are we going to have an attrition moment where we may go back to a different model because we won't be able to sustain the cost?
Or we're just going to have building, housing development happening? There's new ones going up in our Western community. Again, sometimes we we forget that doom and gloom as far as hitting the cliff or what we're going to do. And and we actually have to lift up Duluth. Duluth is on the verge, I believe, of an incredible opportunity between our business. I just was at a, along with Member Locklear Kemp, at a a strategic planning engagement with the Duluth Superior Community Foundation. And just, just listening to the people sitting around the table too that are here in Duluth, they're young and they're vibrant and they're leaders. You know, I I don't, I I understand all of this and I don't want to be Pollyannaish either. I want to walk that fine about being, you know, but boy, I think Duluth, if we, if we talk and 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 work with our community and our our whole district from staff to teachers to leadership, continue to, you know, shout from the rooftops the the great things happening because we all know them.
Absolutely.
We we get those three hundred students to come and they might not be coming back. There'll be new families and and new people coming into Duluth because we're, we're an incredible community of great things.
I really appreciate that. And sometimes I think I get so deep into the statistics and the numbers and knowing that.
Which we love.
Knowing that being an elected official, I'm in the same boat, twenty times smaller, but still feeling the excitement. I think too, one of the interesting things about the the demography and the study and the census work is that in the past ten years, Duluth didn't change.
Didn't change.
We didn't change. And so I think we've seen a continuation for those new people coming in. We might see other people choosing to find another pathway. And that's not to say that there isn't a hundred percent room for growth. But I think what, if you see what's being built, it's not really being built for families. It's being built for either older adults or younger adults that may or may not have children. And then the other really neat thing about Duluth is that it's the regional hub. And so a lot of people that work here don't live here.
Right.
And so that's our other piece is that even though we see Duluth itself booming, a lot of it is that people are living in the surrounding school districts versus. But overall, you know, before the pandemic, we grew a hundred and seventy kids. I want us to remember that. I know sometimes we say, oh, Duluth has been declining in aroma for years and years and years. And and overall, yes, that is a true story, but from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, we were actually growing. And right when the pandemic was hitting, I was remembering saying, you guys, look at this. We're actually seeing more students coming into the district and it was all over the board where they were coming from. There wasn't actually one specific place. Then the pandemic happened and things, things kind of threw us off, but I agree with you. I think we're going to get there and I think our goal is to try to get back to twenty twenty first. If we can get back to that eighty-three hundred number, that would be great. And if we can grow from there, the problem is we're building on a budget that was already at eighty-three. And so we can't do anything more until we get there. And then we can start thinking about the bonus things after we get there. So hoping we can do all those great things. I think the superintendent maybe wanted to.
Sure. No, I just wanted to say thank you to the team and especially you CFO Erickson for the work that you've done. It's really evident that you invest so deeply in the budget work that we do as well as thinking about the resources that we provide to our kids. And I also thank the board for the the deep, deep attempt, the attempt to go really deeply into the the budget and really hold ourselves accountable for the the important work that we we do in deciding where the the resources are allocated. Also, this is, as as CFO Erickson has commented, this is an ongoing dialogue and process. This is not a one, one and done situation. There's going to be another weekend or another meeting in about two weeks where more information can be shared. So some of the questions that you've asked tonight as well as additional questions that you may have, those could be incorporated into our our next presentation. But just want to say thanks, thanks to you as a board and also thanks to you, CFO Erickson, Simone, and all the rest of the business finance team that that put so much work into this. Thank you.
Yeah, just kind of a a follow-up to the superintendent and this discussion about how much information we we talked about today and how important it was and our great questions and your very complete answers. It would be really great, I I I've been sitting here thinking, gosh, I wish every staff in our district would listen to what we discussed today to better understand our budget and how can we make that happen? And so, you know, maybe in your weekly message to the staff, we could embed the link to this meeting today for those who might be interested in better understanding the the strengths and challenges of our budget process. So just a thought there, Superintendent.
Thank you.
I'm going to leave, I'm going to leave you with not going over it in any detail. It can be more just observational. This page was just me working. I kind of talked through it with Simone and and actually Brett in my office compiled this, put this together for me. So I was really appreciative of that. And all I wanted to do was to give you kind of just a sense of how other districts spend their money and how we spend our money. And we're not so far apart from other people, even though sometimes it feels like we're an anomaly at times. And I wanted to share too, the special education child count and the percentage of special education students versus these comparison districts. You can see that we're we're about in line with similar sized districts to us. Eden Prairie has a smaller percentage, even though they're almost identical in A D M size fairly close to us. And then St. Cloud, which is a little bit different, bigger district, also has a higher percentage. But again, you can see, for example, even though we might have a similar demographic of special education students, you can see how the districts are spending those special education dollars, that four hundred series and others. So I just wanted to share with you that fiscal and others, ours looks large. That has to do with a refunding. It would have been under sites and buildings and part of our people instruction, but that has a refunding inside of there. So that's why that eight point oh three nine million under Duluth Public Schools, under the green fiscal and other, there was a, we did a refunding of our capital facilities bonds. So that was in fiscal year twenty-one.
What does P E D?
It's supposed to be sped and it must have gotten cut off.
Oh, okay. I was like, I wondered that, but I was like, is there another acronym I'm supposed to know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Should be sped, special education. So sorry, I didn't, you know, when you see something a hundred times, you know exactly what it's supposed to say. So you don't even realize that there's a.
That makes sense. I just was like, oh, my gosh.
So again, I'm not going to spend time tonight kind of going through the detail, but just kind of wanted to give you a sense of of where we are and how how district, different districts expend their money, where their purpose is. And again, we're very similar to these similar sized districts.
And I I would just put a plug in to go and watch their, almost every school board meeting I've been watching lately, they're all where we're at. They're they're having special needs with their budget. And so, you know, I I I kind of watched Stillwater, but their discussion is the same thing. But it's interesting to listen to each district CFO explain budget. And I I have to admit that we have, I can follow their conversation much better because you've given us such great information and understanding of all the different things going in. But it is, it is kind of interesting as a board member to watch other boards go through the same process.
And and I do want to say, this was a lot to absorb and we didn't really get into the meat of everything. And I think this is a great stepping off point for the next meeting that we're going to have in a couple of weeks. But I do want to encourage you, I will always welcome additional questions by email. If you would like to come in and visit, if there's specific things that you're like, ooh, this is really interesting to me. I'd like to learn more about it because I know you all secretly are going to love school finance. That's my goal in life is to get more people to love school finance. If there's, if there's something that I can help support, please don't hesitate to ask. I know we have a few school board members that weren't here tonight. They'll have the opportunity to listen to this, but I did tell each of them that if they wanted to have a come in so that we could do kind of maybe not two and a half hours, but to kind of give an overview, to to give them the opportunity to ask some questions too before that secondary meeting. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that that's our goal. Please reach out to the superintendent too, if you have any other additional suggestions or questions that you'd want him to do through like his weekly newsletter or opportunities to be speaking to different groups. I think the more we can do, the more we can share, I think is important. And I do want to say on behalf of literally dozens of people who work on this, I mean, even though I get to talk about it and you can, I hope you can feel the joy in my voice to be able to share with you and truly believe that this is a passion of mine to make sure that people feel of informed. There are many, many people that are involved in this and I couldn't do it without Simone. I want to make sure that I give a kudos to Simone Zunich for all the work that she does.
And vice versa.
We have a little code, she's just down the hall from me, but we message each other and go, do you have five? Can you have five? I need five, which is, I need to talk to you right now. So we have that moment. And I do want to just thank Teresa and her H R team because the majority of our budget is people. The source and use of the statistics that drive what turns into money is actually in the hands of all the people we manage. And making sure that all that data is correct, that it turns into a wage and it turns into a benefit and it turns into a budget is something that's really critical. And I think she maybe feels that she's been here five years, even though she's only been here.
Five months.
She's really, really done a great job for our department, our support. She is always available for me to text or call and go, okay, so I have a problem. I have a question, need to make sure this is right. She participates in our budget meetings with our leaders. She's got a great team of people that have done a lot of work. So I just, I really want to make sure that people feel good about that. I also want to just give a shout out to Anthony and his team at T L E. They're managing, you know, between professional development and the outside of school day and school year, you know, upwards to five to six million dollars of S R funds. And their dedication to learning recovery and making sure that we're doing the best we can, it is, it doesn't, it's not lost on us. And they are doing a really fantastic job digging in and trying to be active listeners, but also with the eye on sustainability. I think I love the people who say, I have a little Kathy on my shoulder who says, don't forget that this is, you know. And so what I really appreciate about our our team and especially too Superintendent Magis, that it's focusing on today, but it's also looking past what S R is. We kind of call it that phase out of S R. And those are going to be really deep, important conversations that we have to have. And when we start building those priorities and we see what it is we want to accomplish as a school district and for our students and our families and our community, I think that will drive us to make those priority decisions. And again, knowing that there's way more need than we have resources for, but I very much look forward to the opportunity to create those priorities as we move forward. So just want to thank our team for all of the work they do. My support teams in in business services, facilities, technology, food service, they, they're all doing behind the scenes work to help us prepare for these budgets. I know we didn't talk about it tonight, but we'll talk about it in two weeks. I think I might have mentioned it at the business services meeting. Fuel costs are coming back to bite us right now and we have already overspent our budget for this year for Steve and we're like, stop moving kids. No, we're just kidding. We did not say stop moving kids, but that that was a little bit unexpected for us. We did not see that big of a rise and we're not actually, based on Steve's work with some other colleagues across the state, they're asking us to increase that budget pretty dramatically to be able to cover what future costs are there. So, you know, even in the midst of thinking we know things, there's going to be some unexpected things we're going to have to prepare for. So thank you all. Shoot, oh, I thought it was just the four seven.
Did you get, did we cover everything you had planned to?
We did.
Okay.
I appreciate, I wanted to maybe spend a little more time on that expenditure thing, but please, please, if you have questions. But I think it it tells a story. I think it tells us that we're not out of line. Just wanted to give you that perspective. But we'll look forward to, and Jason hopefully will be our very special guest. So if you have special education questions, we can get those ready for him. And then we'll be talking a little bit more, diving into food service, community service, debt service. Since we have now finalized all of our last refundings, we can talk about kind of that stability moving forward in our debt service and then kind of what the overall picture looks like. So looking forward to that.
We didn't really touch too much on our our high school F T Es either, but we can maybe do that next time.
We can do that next time. They're fairly, they're fairly stable. Just want you to know Lincoln Park is projecting low. They have a buffer crop and then that one's going away, similar at Ordine. Their eighth grade is the bubble, so we'll probably see, but Ordine's been fairly stable. East, East is fairly stable. At Deadfield, we have seen some unenrollments there, but we budgeted a little bit more optimistic there that they may get some re-enrollments there coming into the fall. So we've worked with that team. So overall, pretty fairly stable at the at the secondary level. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your night.
Thank you.